Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vayner City Council at 6:02 PM on March 13th, 2024. Roll call.
Mayor Shai.
Here.
Sheila Gao.
She did have a previous engagement, so she is excused.
Mr. Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
He also had some business to attend to tonight.
I'm Michael Kirk.
Present remotely.
Excellent. The quorum. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Daly, would you do the honors tonight?
I lightly attest to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful eye, Mr. Daly. You can start us off. Mayor's report. Worden Park Playground Chips. Delivery is actually scheduled for tomorrow morning. John with Public Works will use the tractor all day long tomorrow to push that into the playground. And then on Saturday, Park Board is going to have some refreshments available for volunteers that come to help spread some chips under the equipment. Mr. John Hurt that's here with us tonight has volunteered to run the grill for us. So, thank you, Mr. Hurt. Annexation wrap-ups. Documents have been sent to Washington State Office of Financial Management. But it's all done. It's just a matter of recording now. So, all those parcels are officially in the city. Castleport subdivision. The fourth draft of plans were sent to the planner and engineer. It's for 11 homes, the small park in the trail. Planning committee will start taking a look at those again soon. But the last thing we heard was that the engineer was great with their plans. So, all good news. More to come on that. So, if you may know, there was a pretty big water main break last week on Ninth Street as it came down the hill. This is some of that older pipe.
I see they're there again today.
Yeah, they're there today. They're wrapping it up and doing some covering and fixing out a culvert that was right in that area too. So, this is that old ACS asbestos cement pipe that would have been replaced with the county project that got canceled. It's relevant to the city council because, as you remember, our agreement with the extension for the water system receivership was that the city, they would, at any point in the future when the city does take the water system back, we could be liable for other repair costs. And so, these are kind of some of the things that we'll see probably on that bill eventually. So, they had a, they needed the vacuum truck and the large backhoe, which county has through Public Works. And they had to hire a certified ACS company to come in and make those cuts on those asbestos lines, which cost the county $3,000. So, just kind of keep in council.
Did they replace all the asbestos in that area or?
Just that section that was broken. Yeah. It's down Broadband, who currently has a franchise agreement with the city. I think it was in 2015 or 16, we granted them a franchise. It's basically, they run lines through the city on the way to some cell phone towers on the outside of town. They'd like to extend that franchise agreement. There's no issues with that. And so, we're putting together that agreement right now, and they'll rebuild those charges through our attorney. And so, at some point in the future, the council will see that franchise agreement extension. Lewis County PUD, the Broadband Initiative, we've been hearing about for several years now. So, they've actually come into City Hall and applied for their permits for excavation around the city. They expect to start installing fiber this spring with customers by this time next year. So, can spread the news for folks that are looking for alternatives to CenturyLink. You may want to wait just a little while longer before springing for $1,000 in Starlink hardware. Vader permitting inspections. So, some items are now being handled internally, saving costs. And that is directly related to our new permitting and building lead Darren Hutton. He's here with us tonight. So, for those of you who haven't met Darren in the past, hi Darren.
Hello.
He's doing a great job. Thank you for joining the team. And it was the, everything points that that was the right decision for the city. Any council reports tonight? Agenda approval. I do have one addition. I'd like to add a line item under City Business to approve the cost of food for the park chip spreading event of up to $200.
Say that one more time.
I'd like to add a city line item, a city business line item, for the city council to approve the cost to buy the food for the park chip spreading event that Mr. Hurt has volunteered to.
Okay.
Park Board actually discussed it. They intended to approve it, but got sidetracked and forgot to do it at their meeting. So, they're already on board with it.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for March 13th, what? 2024. With the addition of adding the food cost to our Volunteer Day.
You have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the agenda with the addition as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for February 28th, 2024, as written.
You have a motion, Mr. Daly, to approve the minutes from February 28th, 2024. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Hall. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the vouchers for February 28th, 2024, for March of 2024, for $41,456.20.
You have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
Yes, I'm Chris Ruppin with Lewis County Sheriff's Office, providing you with information on February activities. So, citizen contact, we're dealing with 178. Calls on shift were one, traffic stops were six, infractions were one, criminal citations were two, on-shift calls was one, off-shift calls were 18, total called 19. Disturbial arrest was off-shift. Jim custody was in reference to a warrant arrest. Traffic stops was, filled the transport title and video arrest thirty. Does anyone have any questions?
What was the second one?
Driving with licenses for the thirty.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Douglas Williams. I address is 440 North Market, Chalos. I used to be in, on G Street. Was there for about 10 years. And I know you got May Day coming up. And what I'm going to propose is that the city purchase, pardon me. Now, all of those are different. You've got a round one, which is the most, the least expensive. And the square one, the other two were a little bit more. What I'm proposing is that you buy one of these. We can get with, they're all custom log, custom design. Yeah, they can be kind of expensive. But you'll use them probably twice a year, maybe three times. But if you look on the backhoe, you'll see what the breakdown of this is. This is over a 10-year period, and they'll at least last 10 years. I was talking to a guy that had an air dancer, like what's up, in front there. And he had his going eight to 10 hours a day, seven days a week for three years. So, that's, that's, it's up to the durability of them. With these custom inflatable arches, because they are custom, and you can put your city of Vader, whatever you want on there for the events that you have. I can't rent them. You can buy them. They're very distinctive, they're long-lasting. They all have their own, their own blower motor on them.
Oh, this is different. Yeah, they're.
And you go through there, it's kind of a breakdown of of the color, the whatever that comes with them. It doesn't, does come with a blower motor. So, this is something for the city to think of. It would be kind of a major expense for for one day, but you're going to be using it for at least 10 years. And it becomes real affordable. Now, you also, I also have, you saw my 10-foot air dancer out there. I can also get a, now, he's a renter. I can also get a 20-footer for like May Day, Fourth of July. That's going to, that one's going to be different. Of course, these are, they come from California, so there's going to be tipping and tax. So, add it to whatever size you want. They go off with a 30-foot wide, which would span the road. But that's, that's the big one. That's more expensive. They got 15 by 10, and you could drive cars through there. No problem. Probably drive anything, even a Range pickup under there won't be a problem. I did talk, the only problem that maybe encountered would be the box truck for the post office. And I talked to him. He said, oh, okay, I can just come in, come in the, come in the back. So, he didn't have any problem. So, do we have any other questions? For May Day, I know this isn't your, probably the right place. I got to talk to the tomorrow's people that I am going to have a 20-foot air dancer. If the city would like to rent it, that's fine. The price is going to be including setup and takedown. All it takes is electricity to run the blower motor.
I think Mr. Hall had a question about a warranty. What kind of warranty does something like this have?
I think they said, I think I read it had a like 60-day warranty on them, but you're not going to be using it much. So, all right.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams?
If it runs once, it'll run forever.
How much are they, Joe?
They range between.
Depends on what you want. It'd take from, it'd start like, I think, $1,200 for, and they go up to $3,100 for the big square one and the angled one. But they per usage, it's going to be like 70 bucks if you advertise it over 20 years, or 10 years. It's going to be probably 20 times. If it goes up three times a year, the cost is going to go downward for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it.
I wouldn't like to use that, so I can give them to the
Oh, yeah.
You're having tomorrow. And then I'll leave them here.
Thanks for that information.
It's up for you to consider, Joe.
Thanks, Doug. Good to see you.
Any other public comment tonight?
Just a quick question. What time will you be spreading chips on, on the Saturday?
We in the, in the morning. Be, I mean, easily by nine o'clock would be a good time to show up.
Kelly said that she wanted to feed at noon.
Stop the hogs at noon. Stopping the hogs at noon.
All right, and moving on to city business number one. As you can see on the agenda, a lot of it has to do with the various normal requests May Day Committee has for the city. So, let's get to it. Item number one, council consider May Day special event application. In that application, you can see the parade route and all the usual. I don't think there's a lot of changes tonight. Kristen is on the May Day Committee, so if you have any questions, she's a great contact. She'll be here tonight, so. No, no questions. Rules?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the May Day special events application.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the May Day special event application. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, council would consider May Day committee request, closing sections of A and Sixth Street for the parade and games.
I make a motion to approve May Day committee request to close sections of A and Sixth Street for the parade and games.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the request to close the streets. Do we have a second?
I'll say a.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, council would consider May Day committee request for the city to fund the event insurance cost, up to $500. We actually got a quote, and it was 470-something. Is that correct?
$459.
$459. Oh, you've got it in front of you. Excellent, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the city funding event insurance cost up to $500.
You have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the purchase of the event insurance. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded. Daly. Can we look quicker, Mike?
I'll leave it to them.
I know there's a delay. It's hard to be, it's hard to be the first. Any discussion on the insurance? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, council would consider May Day committee request city to waive Warden Park rental fee. Kristen, remind me, that doesn't, you don't need to do that, correct?
That doesn't need to be done because the park sport is going to be in Warden Park. May Day is going to be using the 506 property, and we've already asked for a waiver from Park Sport.
So, yes, so we don't, we don't need to worry about that one. But just for information, yeah, Park Board is going to have their their festivities at Warden Park.
And then, May Day is going to have it at the new location on the corner over by the road tracks?
No, by the, the property by the voter box.
Oh, the bank, yeah.
Yeah, between the post office and the city shop, right there. Yep. Okay. Moving on. Item number five, council would consider May Day committee request, city provide trash service. So, and then also trash service and the road closure signs. So, as you know, the city has various portable rooftop trash cans we use for different events. May Day Committee would like to put those around town for trash for the public. Also, if you remember, in our contract with LeMay, we get four free special event dumpster requests per year. So, we could use one of our dumpster requests for this event as well. And so, all the trash could go into there.
Perfect.
So, yeah, it doesn't cost anything for the city to do this.
Sounds good. Let's make a motion to approve the May Day Committee's request for the city to provide trash service.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve May Day committee request to utilize city trash services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right. Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. May Day though. That's easy part of it, man. Item number six, council would consider resolution 04-2024. Update the park rules and regulations. Kristen, could you summarize this for me real quick, please?
The only change to this than what was previously followed is the price change. We were cutting it to $25 for rental, and Park Sport had sort of changed it to $35 for your residents and $45 if you're not paid a rent. So, if you wanted to rent a pavilion or rent a spot, that'd be right.
I'm motion to update the park rules and regulations for 2024.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve resolution 04-2024 of May Day park rules and regulations. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. Discussion.
And so, that's, that's to rent the park for 24 hours?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, for the day.
That's the whole park?
Seems cheap.
Shut the whole park off for 35 bucks for everybody else?
Well, they have different.
It seems pretty cheap.
Zones, like for Warden, for instance, they've got, like, the playground pavilion, the playground shelter, or the shelter over by the bathrooms. So, you could do one or the other. And you're right, it is fairly inexpensive, but it that's why they're raising it to what is still inexpensive.
The big part.
That's all.
I think they've got four or five.
Okay. Unlabeled zones?
Yeah. Kind of, yeah, when they fill out the application, they kind of say where they're going to be.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for answering my question, Joe.
Yeah. All those in favor of updating park rules, did we redo the vote?
Yep.
No.
No. Oh, but there was more questions as well.
Motion seconded. Now we vote.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of resolution 04-2024, updating the park rules and regulations, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council would consider resolution 05-2024 authorizing the mayor to execute the Washington Department of Commerce inter-agency agreement for the Growth Management Act periodic update grant. So, the city has, is getting a grant from Department of Commerce for $100,000 to pay the planners to update the comprehensive plan. And this authorizes, authorizes the mayor to enter into that agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 05-2024, authorizing the mayor to execute the DOC inter-agency agreement.
So, motion by Mr. Daly to approve resolution 05-2024. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, council would consider resolution 06-2024, authorizing the mayor to execute the Washington Department of Commerce inter-agency agreement for the climate planning grant. Similarly, the city got grant funds for an additional part of the comprehensive plan. And this also we used to pay SCJ Alliance to do the climate. to do the, the climate planning.
How many hundreds of thousands of dollars is that one?
It's another hundred, isn't it? I think it's another hundred.
To plan for climate change. Wrong business. I'll make a motion to approve resolution 06224, authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement for the climate planning grant.
We have a motion from Mr. Daly to approve resolution 062024. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Last item of city business, this would be number nine, this would be addition. Council would consider approving up to $200 for food costs for the parkship spreading volunteers. As I said earlier, planning committee, or excuse me, Park Board had started to discuss this, and then they got a little sidetracked and they forgot to actually approve the expense, but they intended to. So it's kind of by their request that we take care of that approval for them. So we did save quite a few thousands of dollars by spreading the chips ourselves versus hiring a truck that had a blower on it. So a couple hundred dollars for.
Is this being approved for Park Sport expenditure or for the city?
It'd be, it'll be a park board expenditure for any volunteers that show up to help spread this on Saturday.
Make a motion that we approve the expenditure of 200, up to $200 for food at the chip spreading event on the 16th.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve up to $200 for the chip spreading event for food. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Any other discussion?
Recommend that we make sure that we point out which fund that's coming out of.
And it's coming out of the park fund?
Yeah.
And that's coming out of the park fund. That was my understanding.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any elected official comments tonight?
I don't know if the word has gone out, but we're doing all the park board stuff. And if anybody wants to volunteer for the park board, they're having regular meetings. And if they want to inquire about it, talk to Kristen here at the City Hall. She'd be happy to put you on board.
Mr. Ferguson, your turn.
Just wanted to let everybody know, May Day Committee is doing a fundraiser. They're doing corned beef and cabbage on Saturday. I believe pickups at five o'clock at the church. It's going to be a pick up and go kind of thing.
Take your corned beef and run.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's this weekend.
Big day, little crane?
Oh, it's on a Sunday, too. Yeah, big day.
All right. Any other elected official comments? Meeting is adjourned at 6:35 PM.